And welcome. We will now have our pledge of allegiance led by Maya Bailey from Browning High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to address the board, I'm sorry, if you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item that you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not the individual members of the Board or to the staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that the Board voted to approve a resignation retirement and general release agreement with a permanent certificated teacher resolving all claims between the parties. The vote was unanimous with all five members of the Board voting to approve. Public hearing, there is none. Call for agenda items for separate action, adoption of the agenda as posted. I move to approve.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, the motion is approved unanimously. Approval of minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Communications, we have the recognition of retirees. We have a couple of retirees here this evening. And Board members will call your name, ask you to step up to the podium, read some information about you, good information, not bad. And then you'll come around and shake all of our hands and go back to the podium and make some remarks if you wish to. So having said that, our first Board member is Megan Kerr.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Would Victor Flukers please come to the podium? I appreciate that you brought your fan club with you tonight.
They're all on payroll.
Whereas Victor Flukers is retiring after 30 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, and whereas he has served the students of the district as an instructional aide and Child Development Center's guidance specialist for the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, the Drug, Alcohol, and Tobacco Education Office, and the Child Development Centers. And whereas he is a hardworking, dedicated, and caring person who has mastered the art of wearing many different hats in the course of fulfilling his duties, equally adept at assisting with student behaviors, holding parent conferences, working collaboratively with a team to develop an intervention plan for a student, or conducting a parent education class. And whereas his calm and nurturing manner have built trust with students and families, and he has helped parents support their child's learning by providing resources and working closely with staff to ensure that all children have the opportunity to access CDC programs, no matter what their challenge is. And whereas he has a huge heart and gives completely to his work and the people he serves, and his caring presence has been a gift to families in distress and to staff alike, as effective professional interactions have helped to ensure that students, families, teachers, and support staff are successful. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Victor Flukers for his significant and lasting contribution to the education of thousands of students.
Thirty years, half of my life has been spent on Long Beach Unified School District. I was reading an article the other day, and it talks about how many people unhappy at work. And for 30 years, I've been happy, and I've enjoyed what I've done. And one word that I walk away with is remember, remember. I remember when I first started in the GVS office on 7th and Locust. Chris Steinhauser was the principal at Signal Hill. And in that program, you had to call the principals to set up meetings to come to their school, and I called him several times, and he didn't call me back. But he left his school, talking about remembering, that I remember, he left his school, and he came to the office, and he walked in the office on 7th and introduced himself and said, "I'm Chris Steinhauser, I know you've been calling me, I'm here to schedule your meetings." And that was a lasting impression on me that I remember. I remember Dr. Baker, the principal at Garfield, when my son's attending. And always had an open door policy, I would see you walk through the campus, and parents can come and talk to you about anything. I remember that. I remember Dr. Tiffany Brown, when she had to talk me off the ledge because I was concerned with my son being assessed, and she was saying, "Victor, it's okay, he can get the help that he needs, don't feel bad." I remember that. I remember Cindy Young walking in the CDC office as our new director with home baked cookies. And sharing those, she says, "Sort of." With those cookies and coming to CDC with zeal and the love for children and parents and wanting to see CDC continue. Christabel Rodriguez was the coordinating teacher at Carver, and I remember when you came to the CDC office and what you had, and Lindsey Evans coming to, and all of our CTs and our teachers, I remember. My prayer is that somebody remembers me. I pray that I had an impact on someone's life, on a family's life, on a child's life, to help them in some way, so let's remember. Thank you very much, Board, I appreciate it.
It's my honor to recognize, help recognize Annette Howard. Whereas Annette Howard is retiring after 33 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, and whereas she's served the students of the district as a housekeeper and custodian assistant for the Child Development Center, and whereas she's an exemplary employee who works cooperatively with staff at each site she is assigned to, ensuring classrooms are clean, safe, and ready to receive children each day, and she cheerfully adjusts to the site's schedules and special needs when necessary, helping others to meet challenges quickly and effectively. And whereas her work ethic and follow-through have earned her the respect of coordinating teachers at her sites, and she is proactive in recommending alterations to her duties and schedule in response to classroom and center needs to support powerful academic experiences. And whereas her industriousness and reliability meant she was always ready to comfort the day-to-day challenges of the job, and her care for the work she performed was always a reflection of her care and commitment to her students and families. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Annette Howard for her significant and lasting, behind-the-scenes contributions to the education of thousands of students.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Oh, no. Congratulations.
I'm now the great speaker like Mr. Flukers. But I have spent all my life in Long Beach Unified School District. I am a product of Long Beach Unified School District, and I want to praise God for carrying me through 39 years and seven months. Without him, I wouldn't have made it. I know it's a couple of people in the district that work with me, coworkers, they're going to miss my singing in the mornings when they come in, you know, with the word, but I praise God for that, and I want to thank God that I'm ending on a good note with a good director. I have been through about six directors for CDC. And she came in, like Mr. Flukers said, energized, and I have seen so much work done in CDC that I've never seen before. It's amazing of what she has accomplished in a short time. And I mean, she really works and pushes everybody, but she gets the job done. And she's, I'm glad I'm ending with a good director. I thank God for that, and I wish CDC the best.
the opportunity to leave right now, or you can stay here with us for a Board meeting, leave it up to you.
Okay, thank you, thank you one and all, and congratulations to the retirees. We are now at public testimony on items listed on the agenda. I have no request. Staff report, I have no report. Public testimony on items not listed, I do have a few. Eddie Yang?
Again, please, the name?
Eddie Yang?
I got it. Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Eddie, I'm from the Mathnasium, it's a math learning center in Lakewood. We're hosting our first math night at the Gompers Elementary School, and I invited you guys all to come out, see what it's like. I'm here to ask for your help at setting up more math nights at the elementary schools in Long Beach Unified. It's a free event that we help these schools host, we bring out all the activities, we bring out the instructors, and then this gives a chance for the parents and the kids to learn math in a fun environment. I like to say we use the power of play to encourage them to do these activities with their parents. It's just to reinforce their basics in math, and I think it's a great way for them to find fun ways to interact with their parents. I'm looking for, I tried reaching out to the schools, principals are usually pretty busy, front desk is a little bit unreceptive, not calling anyone out, but if there's a way for me to get in contact with the counselors or someone secondary to the principal to kind of set these events up, love to get your help.
Chris, who does he need to talk to?
We'll follow up.
Okay, follow up with you.
Excellent.
All right.
Okay.
Also, did you mention when that math night is?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, last Friday of this month, February 28th, we're going to have it from 5:00 to 7:00. Gompers is having their book fair first, and then we're hosting the math night with them in conjunction with the PTA, so come out and check out the games and see how the families do with the activities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm here to invite you to our fourth annual chili cook-off, which is on March 21st, it's a Saturday, and we challenge all Board members and district employees to come join us as cooks. Come demonstrate your culinary expertise and win, make some chili with or without beans, and we have six prizes, and the challenge is on. I have my brother representing me, and I would like to see whose chili is better. Is your chili better? Let's come join. This will be a fun event, and we also ask you to invite your family and friends and come just have a great time. Thank you.
What time is that? Where?
It is at the Long Beach POA, and it is from 11 o'clock to 3 o'clock. You can go, and I hope that I'm saying the times accurately because I'm looking at the judging schedule, that's my focus on it, but we have activities for the children out there.
Are you saying you're a participant and a judge? That's what she is, is that what I heard?
My brother represents me, and I just collect chili and label it so that no one knows what it is. I do not vote. Other people, Megan's seen me do this before, I am not, it's totally blind. One year, we had someone make chili that lost against our blind test, which was canned chili, so that was quite interesting. So, but they encouraged me not to do blind tests anymore. Either way, so come join us, it'll be fun.
Thank you for that, thank you very much. And it is a very nice event.
Tell D-ORG, sorry.
All right. Maria Koo. Maria?
Yes. Hi, I'm Maria Koo, I am a parent of a second grader at Fremont Elementary, and I would like to bring up a topic that maybe some of you might know about already. We have a mold issue at our school that we believe has been tested and has been going on for a while now. Some of us have seen reports from 2017, 2018, 2019, and we haven't been able to get a clear answer as to what the plan of action is, or what is going to happen, how is it going to be contained, how is it going to be addressed. We are on schedule, I believe, to be under construction for the new air conditioning proposition. I have here copies, if you would like them, of an email sent to Mr. Meyer on January 13th, and emails sent to our principal on October 28th of 2019. What we're asking for is we want to know a few things. How do parents get access to these mold reports? We ideally would like them from 2017 on. What is the plan? To contain, evaluate, and treat the mold, and it's underneath building two, which we understand is where the source is. We believe that, what we've been told is that the sprinkler system had been going off on and off for about a year, and nobody knew about it. And right now, our understanding is that it's sort of been band-aided with the plastic, it's all been wrapped in plastic to contain it. Again, this is all, we don't know for sure, nobody's been able really to communicate with us what the clear, with any clear direction. We'd like to know what agency or individual oversee this, and who will update us as parents, who will update us on how it's being taken care of, who will be our contact person, and in terms of the construction that's coming up, I would imagine that we're not the first school to have environmental issues, so we want to know what, how is that being planned for? Is there a timeframe? Will that be addressed before construction, during construction? Is there a hazmat team already hired by the district that's going to come in and take care of this? We don't have any answers to any of that. We want to know how we're going to be updated. Again, who is our contact person? This isn't the first time this has been addressed with the district or with our school, and we're here, there are a couple of us here, on the 20th, there will be more of us here, we just haven't been able to get any clear answers. We have yet to hear back from Mr. Meyer. I don't know if Mr. Meyer is here or not, oh, hello, Mr. Meyer. So I don't know, did you receive our email? I don't know, because we haven't really, again, haven't had any clear direction.
We will be following up.
Who is that?
We will follow up.
Oh, hello. You're Dr. Williams?
Thank you very much, yeah, we will follow up.
I'll be at Fremont tomorrow, thank you.
Well, am I done, or do I have time for more questions?
Your time's up.
Okay, I have another parent who has more follow-up questions, then. And when you say you'll be at Fremont, what time?
It'll be early afternoon.
Dr. Williams or Mr. Meyer?
I.
You will be at Fremont tomorrow.
I will.
Early afternoon?
Like 1:00?
1:00, and you'll be meeting with?
I haven't contacted anyone at the school yet, so.
We, 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 I'm sorry.
Principal?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Katie Medlin?
Aye, good afternoon. I'm going to reiterate a few of the things that Maria just said, but I'm also here to address the ongoing mold issue in building two at Fremont Elementary. So speaking on behalf of a lot of the parents of Fremont students, we're just not happy with the way that this extremely serious environmental health concern is being handled by the school principal. I understand that there's been environmental testing done in the past, however, the outcomes of these reports was only available to certain parents on a case-by-case basis, and feedback upon reading these reports was alarming. Most recently, when a parent went in to view the report, it mysteriously could no longer be found by the principal, so none of us are now able to view those reports, I'm not sure exactly what is written on those, I've not seen them firsthand myself. I also understand that a recent Williams complaint was also filed on this matter. Comparative risk studies by the EPA have consistently ranked indoor air pollution among the top five environmental risks to public health. Proper maintenance of indoor air is more than a quality issue, it encompasses safety and stewardship of your investment in students, staff, and the facilities. All that I'm asking for is for the district to provide an indoor air quality survey. It's a very standard procedure that will show mold spore counts inside and outside the building. If the count's high, correct the issue. As parents, we're concerned about the health risks that are associated with our children being exposed to toxins. I'm sure you can understand from a parental standpoint that our kids are in this building six hours a day, and five days a week, so this is distressing for us as parents. It's the district's responsibility and, I think, obligation to put the safety of our kids first. I hope that by speaking, this raises awareness about the mold issue. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Meyer said he'll attend the school tomorrow and kind of address the situation. We just want you to take the appropriate steps to investigate it, that's all that we're asking at this point, and to be able to provide the parents with some feedback as to exactly what's going on and what correctional actions will be taken. Again, like Maria said, more parents from Fremont will be here on the 20th to discuss this matter again, so it would be great if maybe we could get some feedback by then, we have about, what, a few weeks away. At this point, I think we've beat this down, so I'll stop here, but thank you for listening, and I appreciate it. Oh, is this something that could be an agenda item by any chance?
You have to put a request in, and then we'll tell you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Steinhauser, I know at the facilities meeting at Fremont on the 20th that Mr. Miranda and Mr. Rising were there and did field some questions regarding this issue. Can they possibly follow up with staff?
Correct, we'll follow up with, this issue was addressed and answered there, and then we will follow up with Mr. Meyer and Alan, you may, we'll all meet together to share that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are now at business items, personnel, Mr. Meyer?
Thank you. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the Superintendent. Appointments eight, this is classified and exempt personnel. Appointments eight, leaves of absence nine, demotion one, abandonment of position one, termination of service one, resignations eighteen, retirements eleven, amendments two. Certificated personnel appointments fourteen, leaves of absence one, resignations three, retirements four, amendments two, and I move approval.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Instruction? I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance report A.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance report B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in finance report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Thank you, Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved four to zero with one recusal. Business Department report?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question, I'm sure I've asked this in the past, Mr. Superintendent, can you remind us, I noticed there were some Board Initiative proposals here, what our process is for that?
Sure, so the Board Initiative is on the Business Department report, come in various forms, they come from the Board members, they come from parents, they come from teachers and administrators at the school. So usually what happens is that you never, we never fund people in the Board Initiative, and it's a cost-sharing, so for example, under the first one, where there's a fundraising program taking place with the Millikan Athletic Department to raise $50,000 for new weight rooms, so the request was to, for $10,000. The Millikan teachers, even though folks are one-to-one in our district with Chromebooks, that sometimes in the PE department, they're not there, so because, and so they've done actually a wonderful job of what we call single-subject integration, and they would love to use these to enhance that work. You can see the feminine program at Whittier, and so these are different areas that are either a cost-sharing or what I'm going to call seed money to get it started.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Purchasing and contracts report?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. We are now at Superintendent Item Student Discipline.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, we recommend that student 864 be expelled from the schools within the district. This student would be expelled under Education Codes 48915C1, and would not be eligible to apply for re-admission until after January 27th to 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously.
Next, we have administrative assignments recommendations, so first, we have Vanessa Carroll, who is a new hire to the district, to the mentoring supervisor with our EduCare program, and we also have Keo Kook Legardi, who is a teacher on special assignment and Head Start to the Early Learning Center manager within the Head Start program.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously.
Are any of our new, are any of them here? No, okay.
We are now at unfinished business, there is none. New business, Board Policy 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Procedure, David?
Good afternoon, Board members and executive staff. Would like to just share with you that
Would like to just share with you that a federal program monitoring view was, review was conducted and held on January 7th through the 17th. During that time, CDE found that Long Beach needed to make a few updates to their UCP board policy. And so, the policy that you have before you includes the updates that were recommended in that federal program monitoring review.
David, other than the preschool-specific language, did I, did I miss something? Or were there just the two sections on the preschool-specific aspects of the policy?
There were two sections, one included the child nutrition portion that was missed. The other portion just included the, the actual process itself. So, those are the only two areas that they found for us to correct. And once it's voted tonight, that would, if it's voted, that would conclude the correction.
All right, I move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Board Policy 5030, student wellness, updated educational specifications. Pamela, could you do a little background on that?
Good evening, President Williams and board members. The proposed policy that you have before you, student wellness, has been revised and updated in collaboration with the district's Health Advisory Council, which is comprised of district and community stakeholders. It reflects expanded legislation under state and federal guidelines for all districts that participate in the National School Lunch Program. You will see that if, as you read through the policy, it addresses a broad, broad spectrum of student wellness elements and aspects, including nutrition promotion, physical activity, guidelines for all the food and beverages made or sold available on school premises, policies for food and beverage marketing, opportunities for, to participate in the development, implementation, and periodic review of the policy by our stakeholders. Our next steps will be to, as you approve this policy, to address the Health Advisory Council, which is the group that revised this policy. They will become known as our Wellness Policy Implementation Group. They will help us complete the administrative regulations to support all of the aspects of this policy, as well as to help guide our work in communicating with our schools and developing a review process that will be reported out to you every three years.
Pamela, so I know, I know that's a very broad and all-encompassing policy here. In, in general, because of the difficulty in implementing this, would you say that the goal of this policy is to help promote and support just healthy lifestyles in general?
Very much so, and that's both physical and mental emotional. Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for the work on this. I've been a part of that Wellness Health Advisory Council for the last couple of years. And I know this is something that has been worked on for a while. So, I look forward to the next iteration of that Wellness Advisory, Policy Advisory Council, being inclusive of many stakeholders in the district. So, I thank you for the past work and look forward to continuing.
Okay. Do we approve it?
I'm waiting for the call.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Selection of new Superintendent of.
Updated.
Oh, I missed one, okay.
Yeah, updated educational specifications.
I thought that was all part, I'm sorry, updated educational specs?
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Now, we're at selection of new Superintendent of Schools, Ruth?
Good evening, Mr. President, board members and staff. It's a pleasure to give you this update on the Superintendent selection. And over time, we've had a number of people support this process. So, I wanted to give a specific shout-out to Steve Swift and Chris Eftehu, who've been working really quickly to get all these materials together. So, I just want to let you know about the process and timeline. So, you have in your orange folders there a copy of this presentation, which will also be posted online. And you'll see that the process and timeline is outlined in four phases. The first phase being the planning phase. And it already started in January 22nd, January 22nd, when you took action to identify the process. And today, to approve the timeline, to set the selection criteria, and the recruitment materials. And we also have in Phase Two, the public outreach and recruitment. And that actually started last week, because I've already seen two particular groups, one of them being the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. They were incredibly insightful. They gave just wonderful descriptions of the characteristics that they would like to see in a superintendent. And I can go ahead and share a couple of those statements with you and the themes that came out, because it was really telling, and I think they did a really good job of setting the bar and us collecting feedback. But the themes that came out were comments such as these. Not only should they know how the business side of things work, but also what students are doing and what they're going through. The superintendent should have open communication and be involved at the schools. Trustworthiness was also a big key. The students mentioned that they want the superintendent to be relatable, reachable, and accessible. Again, trustworthiness came up as them wanting the superintendent to be somewhat of an open book. They also said that someone, to be a superintendent, should be someone who works well as a member of the LUSD Board, not just as a leader, but somebody who represents part of their community, not just advocates for their community, but fights for their community. They want a superintendent with experience, transparency, and someone who makes decisive decisions. They're, they're very decisive. They want someone to be the kind of leader that not only advocates for the community again, but fights hard and fights long. Another comment was optimism is great, but realism is better. And lastly, it's important to see students have the opportunity to be able to learn in a safe and inclusive environment, no matter how they identify or express themselves, and have the support to do so. So, along with that was equity as an important theme. So, also during this public outreach phase, there will be a thought exchange, and there will also be the community forums that are laid out in the handout that Lori Bettsel has passed out to the group. And so, there are seven opportunities for community members, staff members, students as well, to attend these forums, to share their thoughts, and to learn about the selection process. All of these forums will be live-streamed through YouTube. They will have translations at all of them. And for more information, you can go on to the website, and you'll find under Superintendent Selection in the A-through-Z index that will be there. Also on the website, there will be multiple documents that we've shared over time at these board meetings, and also how to apply for this position. And as it says here on the process and timeline, we'll be reaching out to multiple professional organizations throughout California. So, that's Phase Two. Phase Three is the application screening and interview process. And that's where we have Advisory Committee members, who will be conducting the initial interviews and recommending semifinalists to the Board of Education. And then the board will be reviewing finalists April 24th and 27th. The last phase, I see there's a misspelling there, is an appointment on May 6th. And then, during that time, there will be the transition planning. And August 1st is the actual day that the superintendent will start. So, going back to Phase Two, the community forums, this is just a listing of all the forums here. And then the Advisory Committee, we have two slides that list the different associations and representatives, the number of representatives who will be coming to be on that Advisory Committee.
Also, are we pushing out these dates to our different parent organizations?
Absolutely, yes. So, we are going to be going to various district and community stakeholder groups. So, I have a number of meetings set up, and we'll send out electronically all of these materials.
Ruth, related, thank you, Ms. Ashley, for putting this together for us, related to Board Member Ked's questions. I know we'd also agreed to, and you just referenced it, having an opportunity at ongoing standing meetings like DCAC and CAC for them to provide input. Is it possible to have that as part of the calendar of what standing meetings we're also going to be receiving?
Yes, yes. We'll put that on there as far as the website, in terms of where we'll be going to get that feedback.
So, these pub, just for clarification, so these pubs are in addition to those standing meetings. So, when we look potentially to get an idea at the listing of stakeholders for the Advisory Committee, most of those DCAC, Pacific Islanders, Special Ed, some of those are combined within those standing meetings that we'll have an opportunity.
Yes, they are.
And then, Ms. Ashley, could you talk a little bit more about the Thought Exchange tool?
Absolutely. So, it's currently being deployed to gather feedback for the LCAP, and I think you've seen that already. So, it will have a similar format. It's going to be deployed February 24th through March 6th. So, it'll start off with a video, and then there will be questions that will, people can respond to and make comments on. And then we'll gather that feedback right before you engage in the interview process.
Great.
And for anybody who hasn't gone, so, if you're participating in the LCAP process, you can work with Thought Exchange, and you could kind of see how it works. I think one of the benefits of it is if you're a little apprehensive and you're not sure that you have something of value to say, the way it's laid out is you can see what everybody else is already saying, and you can just like what other people are saying, and we'll aggregate those common themes. So, for folks who may be a little unsure that they have relevant input, or is some, is my thought unique to me? If you get on there, you might see that other people are thinking it as well. And so, there's an opportunity for those who may be a little hesitant to engage in the process, to see what's already there, and be able to agree on those things.
The only other question I have about that is, we'd also talked about and agreed to, for any additional meetings that any of us are going to, is the idea that we would use the Thought Exchange, either link or portal, to get folks from those meetings that we're attending to participate in that process?
Yes, absolutely. And of course, you want to encourage them to come to our forums.
Right.
And you'll provide us with a script of, I was fortunate to see you in action on your second go with it. But it would be important for us to have that and what that looks like in expectation of time, so that
Right.
we're not out there flailing.
You will get that by Friday.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Appreciate the work, Ms. Ashley, and we know it's a work in progress, but the timeline is tight, so.
It is, but we're going to make that May 6th timeline.
Thank you, Ruth.
And for the, I have a follow-up question for the community forums. Will it be the board members on our own, or will we have staff to take notes and help facilitate the meeting?
Yes, thank you for asking that, because I will ask each of you to come to your own respective community forum to open it. I'll kind of take over to facilitate the conversations. We had staff signing up today to help with the note-taking, all while people are participating and giving their, their feedback.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, within that context, just quickly, I think it's important that we announce when and where these forums are going to take place, don't you think? 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 11th, Cabrillo High School. 6:00 PM Thursday, February 13th, at Lakewood High School. 6:30 PM February 18th, Jordan High Community, School Community Room. 6:30 Monday, February 24th, Wilson High Auditorium. 6:30 Tuesday, March 3rd, Renaissance High School Performing Arts Center. 6:00 PM Thursday, March 5th, Prisk Elementary School Auditorium. 9:00 AM Saturday, March 14th, Cabrillo High School School Auditorium.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Meyer. One, one last thought regarding the school site forums. How will, how are we handling, I'm thinking about Renaissance in particular with the parking challenges there? Sort of information, letting folks know if you're going to attend this forum? And if you don't have an answer right now, I just thought about the parking issue around Renaissance.
No, we've thought about it, though, so we'll get that out along with it for each individual forum.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, and thank the team. There's a lot of overtime being put out here, so especially, again, to the OMS team, thank you very much.
No, it's information only.
Just information? Yes, it's just information.
Okay. Other questions? Excellent job, Ruth, thank you very much. We are now, reporter, board members, we will start with our student board member, Maya.
Don't mind us, board member.
They brought goodies always, so I figured while she's speaking, it'd be a good time to try.
Good evening, my name is Maya Bailey. First of all, I would like to thank you, the Long Beach Unified School District Board of Education, for the amazing work you do, supporting every student every day. To give you a little bit of background information about me, I'm currently the ASB 11th grade class president. I was student body president during my 10th grade year, and have served on ASB in an officer capacity for three consecutive years. I am also a four-girls student mentor, and had the pleasure of addressing the board members' facilities department and construction teams at the grand opening event for Richard D. Browning High School. The pathways at Browning High School focus on hospitality, tourism, recreation, and culinary arts. Our motto is hospitality excellence for the future. One of the most special attributes of our program is that all students have the privilege of taking both hospitality and culinary arts classes during their ninth grade year. This gives our students the opportunity to learn what they are most interested in, and ultimately choose a direct path for subsequent classes. I personally have chosen to focus on hospitality, and I am determined to use skills and strategies I am acquiring during high school to propel, to propel me during my future college and career experiences. I would like to give you an idea of some of the exciting things that are happening at Browning High School now. We just had a linked learning experiential visit where 60 guests came to visit our district, and our school was able to host the event. During this event, the culinary classes prepared breakfast for 60, lunch for 20, and afternoon delights for another 60 guests. We got a lot of experience with catering and hosting our district guests. That was an invaluable learning experience. We're also planning to visit our post-secondary partners at the University of Nevada in Las Vegas. The CEO from MGM Grand is looking forward to hosting our Browning students as we learn more about front-of-the-house and back-of-the-house operations. I am very excited about that. Maybe I'll figure out how to hit the jackpot once I turn 21 from that experience. We are also very proud that culinary ninth graders have an 88% pass rate on the California State Food Handler's exam. That test is a work readiness indicator that demonstrates the quality of our instruction within the pathway. As you can see, there is lots to be excited about. I am truly honored to speak with the board this evening, because in light of African-American History Month, this forum provides an amazing opportunity to stand on the shoulders of our ancestors and not become a dream deferred, but rather one that truly can be actualized. I have, I have come to realize that this board provides students like me the opportunity to achieve all the hopes and dreams of people from diverse backgrounds who are marginalized in the past. We are now able to rise up and live out the true nature of our nation's Bill of Rights. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal, and that in education an education in Long Beach Unified Schools, especially at Richard D. Browning High School, affords me and the students within the district the opportunity to soar higher than ever before. In closing, I'd like to thank the board again for the excellent work you do. I'd like to thank my parents, Erin Berryman and Anisha Berryman, my teachers and staff at Browning High School, and our fearless leader, Dr. Felicia Anderson. We are truly proud to be Bison, and just like our mascot, we stand our ground. Thank you.
Maya, well done.
Thank you.
You did mention you were 11th grader, right? But I also heard you say something about future college and career. So are you giving thought to possibly a college choice, or is that something that's in the distant future?
I have given thought to UNLV, which is also one of our experiences that are upcoming for us due to the fact of their hospitality program and with the relations to, you know, the Las Vegas Strip. I'm hoping to have a future over there.
Is there anybody in the audience you want to recognize? I heard you say, parents.
I want to recognize my dad.
Okay.
Because.
All right.
Hey, Dad.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mrs. Kerr.
Thank you so much. You've raised quite a young, a remarkable young leader here. Thank you. It's been a busy couple of weeks since we've been back. I think on Monday alone, I went to five different things, one of which was the Linked Learning Visitors at Browning, and I can attest that they were complete professionals, and the folks from Portland and Chicago and New York that I talked to were beyond impressed with our students. So thank you, Dr. Anderson, and to the staff and students at Browning for hosting that event. I wanted to thank the Century Club. I went to their annual banquet, I think it's just this week, and they give out $150,000 worth of scholarships to student athletes across this district, starting in middle school all the way up to our community college and Cal State partners. And in the room, you have Olympians. We had Jessica Hardy was there, Chase Utley, who just retired from Major League Baseball, who's won World Series and MVP, and we had all of our high school athletes who were honored. And so in partnership with the mayor, scholarships were given to our high school athletes across the district. And it's one of those groups that operates kind of quietly in the city, and if you're engaged with Century Club, you know that they're always doing something to support student athletes, but they don't always garner and ask for a lot of attention. So I just want to give a special shout-out to the Century Club and Shar Higa, who is one of our teachers at Jordan, who's the current president and the first woman president of the Century Club in its history, for their continued support of our student athletes at every level in the district. I want to thank the Pacific Islander Parent Voyage for welcoming me into the room. Ruth was there doing one of her, the superintendent, what are we calling it? Feedback sessions, which was great. And then they did a really deep dive into the Khan Academy and how families and parents can support students in utilizing the Khan Academy for student success. And it was a good 45-minute presentation and really going into the inner workings of how to support students. So thanks to that group for continuing to advocate on behalf of all of our Pacific Islander students across the district. I want to thank public advocates, CFJ, and all of our staff who participated and helped plan the LCAP Forum on Saturday. I'm sure other people will talk about it, but it is another example of unique parent and family and community engagement and being aware of the stake that all of us have in what happens in LVUSD. I got plenty more, but that's a good start. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, May. Dr. Benitez?
I'll add a couple more, and yes, thank you to everyone that came out to the LCAP meeting. I believe we had our education celebration after our last board meeting, too, so thanks to staff and everyone that came out to engage around all the wonderful options and choices that we have for schools in our district. And then, and I'll leave some for you all to mention because there's so much that happened in the last two weeks, but I want to thank tonight Pamela Lasecki and her team. I had a wonderful opportunity to spend some time on Friday at our TRC with, I think it was about 20, 25 members of the team, right, or teams, and just get a clearer sense of the breadth and the scope of all that happens from a curricular instructional professional development perspective and how our curriculum works, how we roll it out, how support for our teachers and administrators, how that happens. So I think one of the things that I think would be important for our community members, but also for us as a board, is to sort of capture, I mean, it was around two hours. I don't think we're going to do two hours here, but to capture the essence of the collaboration across teams, and again, the breadth and the scope of what it takes to develop, implement a curriculum, and then provide the needed resources and support to be effective with this high-quality curriculum, instruction, and professional development that occurs. So I'd love the opportunity, Mr. Superintendent, whether it's at a board workshop or at a meeting, to try and get a snippet, because even two hours is not enough. But I wanted to thank all the members of your team, Pamela, and the work that we do that sometimes goes unnoticed, but I think it would be awesome for parents and students to also know where does this come from, right? And how do teachers decide on what, you know, resources and homework sheets they're going to use and aligning standards with unit guides and sort of how that works across the district? So just wanted to highlight that, and thank you.
Mrs. Kerr here.
Okay. Dr. Benitez, you briefly mentioned the education celebration. I just want to add that when you attend an event like this, you get to find out about things like femineering at Whittier Elementary, and this is a pipeline for females in STEM education. And I think that's pretty exciting, because we can't expect girls to get involved in STEM at a middle school level without having a foundation, you know, developed in their younger years. But also, I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody. We have so many Saturday events, and there, you know, there are staff members that attend all or most of these Saturday events, and that's in addition to Saturday School and everything else that's going on. So really, our people work 24/7, and I appreciate that. Our kids appreciate that. The parents appreciate that. So thank you for everybody for that work. The event at Browning was fabulous. Mrs. Kerr and I had an opportunity to sit down with a group of leaders from Portland, Chicago, and we had a conversation around equity, especially at the high school level. And sometimes you don't realize how good you have it until you're explaining to somebody else what we have, and then they have questions about how to provide equity when they don't have school of choice. And then realizing a lot of our, a lot of the benefits for our high school students center around just the fact that we have school of choice, because if you take away that one component, if you take away that school of choice, students and families are relegated to their neighborhood school, which depending on what neighborhood you live in or how that school is performing dictates how well your child is going to do. But in our district, you get to choose which high school suits your child, your family, and that is a huge benefit. And it just solidifies to me the job that we're doing here. We're on the right track. We've got work to do, but that what we're already doing sets us up to be in a really good place. Let's see. Also, last week, there was an event at Webster for the Great Kindness Challenge, and that was a mood booster. We, a lot of the staff and administrators were invited to join in, and what we did was we lined up, and the kids came down a red carpet. It was the Webster Kids, but it was also MIR because they're hosting MIR for their, you know, HVAC update, all that kind of thing. And it was really a feel-good, wonderful way to start a day. There was music playing. We were high-fiving everybody's, people made posters. It was really wonderful. The LCAP Forum, I just want to mention, on my way to Cabrillo, as I'm driving on Santa Fe, I'm noticing these banners, and they're the Success in the West banners, and they feature individual Cabrillo students and their college aspirations. And I just think that's so fabulous to drive down the street and see these kids being highlighted and how exciting, and I wish we had that when I was in high school. Anyhow, so I'm a little envious. So the LCAP Forum, it was really well-attended. There probably was about 75, I want to say, 75, 80 people, again, coming out on a Saturday. Congratulations and thank you to our OMS team. They were there to set up at 7:30 in the morning, and that's to make sure that everybody had access to this community meeting. So it was, am I lying? Was it livestreamed? It was livestreamed? So it was livestreamed. It was recorded, because then we can add captions later. So thank you so much to our OMS team for doing that and working a lot of other Saturdays as well, but also because it was a collaboration between the district and community group. So it's that partnership. We're all working for the same thing. When we work together, we have better results. Let's see. And then I just want to mention at Emerson, and also at Lincoln, but at Emerson, I had an opportunity to visit the CCT class, which is the Collaborative Co-teaching Class. Ms. Kerr, I know you're due there tomorrow morning. Our lovely principal would like to extend that invitation to the rest of the board members to come on by Emerson. It's a kindergarten class. You don't have to spend more than 30 minutes to get the full experience of what's happening in this class. It's special ed kids together with gen ed kids, and they have a push-in with a speech therapist. So what it looks like at parts of the day, you have a group with one teacher that's doing a reading assignment, another group that's doing a writing assignment, and then another group that's with the speech teacher. And then I think it was like a 20-minute rotation, and then they switch. It was really interesting to see. And then we walked into another kindergarten class to kind of make comparisons. It's a fabulous program. It's a program that we're just piloting. The teachers, the principal, everybody is so pumped up about the, this program. They really wanted me to express that, because this is something they want to continue and expand, and it's something good that we're doing, and I hope that we will continue with this. So again, I just want to extend that invitation. Emerson, the CCT class, you'll love it. Pick a day where you need a mood booster or an uplift, and you'll have it at Emerson.
Thank you, Diana. Mr. Meyer?
Well, the real mood booster is visiting schools, that's for sure, Diana. Signal Hill, Avarado, Wilson, and Jeff occupied much of my time recently, and the work that goes on at these schools is just phenomenal. For example, at Signal Hill, the principal there has made time for peer observations of teachers, one to another, and this is something that is so wonderful, because peers can pick out the strengths and reinforce the strengths and perhaps share ideas about where you can grow. And it's not just close the door and be an independent operator, it's collaborating on striving towards excellence in instruction. So that's great to see. I need to mention that at Jeff, the renovation there is just phenomenal, and it really has added a hop and a skip and a jump to the attitude of the students. They are so proud of that facility, as is the staff, and there's just really a great feeling that's going on there. So always fun to visit our schools.
Thank you, John. I want to just add to some of the comments from Diana about the Webster Great Kindness Challenge. It's always a pleasure to go and visit, and I guess the kids are delightful. Dr. Baker joined us, and Kristy Kell were all part of the, representing the district there. And it's more important, given the kind of climate that we have in this country regarding civility, and to see the, our young folks actually taking part in the understanding the need to be kind to each other. And so I really, really enjoyed dealing with that. Last week, the Council of Great City Schools was, were here for their executive committee meeting, and as part of that, they always hold a reception for the local, local district and the board. And I wanted to thank all the board members, all my board members who attended. And that day, the chair-elect of the council, Michael O'Neill, asked me the day before if he could tour one of our schools, and we took him to CAMHS, and thank you, Jill, for setting that up. He had a chance to see CAMHS in action. He was flabbergasted at the, at the work that's going on at CAMHS, and he took that back to the executive committee and wanted to know how they can get stuff like that done in Boston, so. But thank you all, and Jay, thank you for coming along and being part of that. Appreciate it. And I'm going to just, in terms of the reception, the dinner, we had a surprise at the dinner, and I'm going to let Megan talk about the surprise.
So we know we're under strict orders not to talk about this, and I have a feeling it's why I'm getting that look right now. But the council did want to thank our superintendent for a lifetime of service to schools and to students. And so on behalf of Council of Great City Schools, they express their deep appreciation for the leader that you are, the example and the cheerleader that you are for public education, especially in urban school districts across the country. So on behalf of the council.
We knew he was going to have a hard time with this, so we snuck it in.
And kept it short.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Megan. Thank you very much.
They did get you this for your retirement as well.
Right.
The title of the book is A Thousand Places You Should See When You Retire.
When You Retire.
When You Retire.
All right.
See, he could have avoided the public, this public part if he showed up at that event, but he didn't show up at that event because he didn't want to be recognized. And look and see what happens.
I think concurrently with recognizing our superintendent, we should recognize Dr. Felton Williams, who's the outgoing president of the Council of Great City Schools. And the crowd that he grew there at La Opera was just wonderful from all over the nation. And boast a little bit, they all have big eyes about what's going on in Long Beach. So thank you for your leadership, Dr. Williams. Thank you, John. Thank you. Okay, we are now at announce, I'm sorry, superintendent's report. Okay. We are now at announcements.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask, and I forgot I didn't check with you. We ran really close to 5 o'clock tonight, so I would ask that we close in honor of Gene Lenzner, a Long Beach legend who passed this week at 97. I've been fortunate to serve on the board of CCJ for the last four years and share that experience with Gene and be a recipient of his great humor and his great wisdom. And the Interfaith Breakfast is actually tomorrow, so serendipitous that we will be together as a community to celebrate the great work that he's done, especially around anti-bias and bigotry work. He has, by creating the Building Bridges Program, which has been around for 30-plus years, thousands upon thousands of Long Beach students have had the opportunity to listen to each other more, learn more about each other, and intentionally work for inclusion and anti-racist practice and policy in this community. So he will be missed, but the legacy that he leaves behind in thousands and thousands of campers and the work that they continue to do today will not
of campers and the work that they continue to do today will not be forgotten, so if we could remember him.
Thank you, Megan. We also have the Long Beach Symphony Project tomorrow.
Tomorrow and Friday.
Tomorrow and Friday, where a number of our kids will get a chance to actually listen to a live symphony orchestra. About 4,000 kids that are going through there?
No, it's about, it's all fourth, fifth.
All fourth and fifth graders?
All fourth and fifth, so.
It's more like 10.
Is that, that many? Okay. And as an expression of the way that we continue to, to, to get, have our kids exposed to the arts in this city, it's a phenomenal event every year when they get a chance to make that visit. Any other announcements?
Yes, Mr. Williams, we've mentioned it before, we have U.S. Census 2020, census date is April 1st. Our district is highly engaged with our Long Beach City efforts to make sure that we have an accurate and complete count, so I would urge our community partners, our school site staff, our parents, our students, to remind ourselves how important it is, from a policy perspective, from an equity perspective, from a funding perspective, from an educational perspective, from our civic duty perspective, to have an accurate and complete census count. This is the first time in our country that we will be able to do the census online. We will have laptops, we will have district-wide, what are we calling them, Jill, now, their QA, QA case, questionnaire, action kiosk?
Yes.
Where you can actually do the census. So I want to urge everyone to please complete the census. Our schools, our communities, our stakeholders are all dependent on an accurate count, particularly with respect to our hardest-to-count communities, which are communities of color, which are immigrant communities, which are zero to five children, our seniors, our students and families living in poverty, our families that are renting, which we have a critical mass of in our district. So the announcement is, fill out the census.
I would love to see our little ones, and those of us who have had little ones, know that when you give them an assignment for their parents, they love to make sure that we do it, whether it's those cards we used to have to fill out in triplicate for every kid, but they love giving us homework packets, and so we encourage our youngest ones to remind their families to be counted.
Dr. Benitez, did you say Mr. Williams, or for, when you made your comment? Thank you, Mr. Williams, or?
Maybe I did, I did it inadvertently. I'm not sure if I said it or not.
That's okay, we just want to make sure we get that right.
Before we leave, though, if Maya and the board members could stay.
We're going to do a photo op. We'll entertain a motion for adjournment. The board is adjourned, we're going to do a photo with our student, student rep.